This conference will now be recorded.
Could I have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Boff.
Here.
Councilmember Stimmel.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
You're muted. Councilmember Williams, you're muted.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Present.
And Councilmember Savini.
Here.
And Mayor Thornton, I'm here as well. Mayor Thornton. Well, one quick comment I want to make right now is that, of course, we're having virtual meetings, so we don't have our sign-in sheet, our sign-in affidavit that we've been attending the meetings. And the clerk has been doing that for us and signing our names, keeping up with that affidavit. So I just wanted to assure all the council members that that is being kept current and the clerk has taken care of that for us. Did I say that correctly? Micah?
Yeah, I have not been signing your names. I've just been attesting that you've been present.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm on it.
Please check, please second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? More than twice. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, sir, we have one. General comment, Laura Martin, 903 East 7th Street, La Center, Washington. Good evening, councilmembers. Tonight, I would like to address the city's vetting process for hiring new consultants. What kind of process is used to limit the liability to the city? Currently, the city has a consultant on the payroll that has a couple of open cases where they are accused of deliberately and intentionally creating a hostile work environment against women, minorities, and women over 40. Current article in The Columbian. For the amount of money that we pay monthly for an outside human resources consultant to complete the vetting process of new applicants, how does somebody like this end up representing the city? This sounds like it could be a future liability issue and not somebody I would like to support with my tax dollars. What are we doing to prevent this from happening? And that is the end of the comments.
Very good. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have a couple of things this evening. First of all, I do want to mention that the city offices remain closed to the public, but all employees are working and are, all the office, all the departments are functioning. And I'm sure that the council, that the city is keeping up with all their services and providing service to the residents of La Center. And we hope to be reopening to the public here more towards the middle of this month. I also just want to mention, and the chief has more of this, brought this in his report this evening, but the La Center High School class of 2020 are going to be having a vehicle parade this Saturday. Again, chief will have the route and a lot more information on that parade, but I would encourage everyone to get out and support our class of 2020. There'll be an opportunity to rave, wave signs and just wave to them and congratulate them as they drive by in their vehicles. I think it'd be great if everyone could just get out and support that. And I know the city, the city, Danny will be helping out with a couple of the cruisers to help the parade get through town. And Lions Club will be participating and La Center United. So it's an opportunity for everybody to get out and really cheer on our class of 2020. Hopefully, everyone can get out and do that. Just also want to mention that I did have a conversation with the owner of the Palace Casino Center. And right now, he is planning to open the palace on July 1st, reopen the palace on July 1st, of course contingent upon the Phase 3 and all the appropriate and necessary documentation for that. But that's very encouraging. I was happy to hear that. And I just wanted to share that with the council as well. Well, that's all I have this evening. The next thing we have on the agenda is the attorney's report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to spend a little bit of time updating you on where things stand with respect to the COVID pandemic and public meetings. In late March, the council adopted a resolution which canceled our second Wednesday meetings until the governor's stay home, stay safe proclamation was no longer in effect. On May 31st, that proclamation expired. And so our second Wednesday of the month meetings are back on. On May 29th, the governor extended the ban on in-person meetings through June 17th. But what he did not do was extend the limitation on what actions council can take at their meetings. So if you recall, the governor's original open public meeting proclamation prohibited in-person meetings and it also limited actions that council could take to actions that were necessary and routine or were responded to the COVID outbreak. So that limitation expired. The limitation on the action that you could take expired at the end of May. So currently, we're operating under the proclamation saying no in-person meetings. That limitation or prohibition lasts through June 17. If that prohibition on in-person meetings is not extended beyond June 17, then we will be operating under the Washington Safe Start Plan. And that's the plan that has the four phases of reopening Washington businesses. My guess, and it's simply a guess, is that the governor will not extend the open public meeting proclamation anymore. So as of June 18th, we'll be operating under the Safe Start Plan. And we likely will be in Phase 2 still. And Phase 2 of the Safe Start Plan limits gatherings to five people who are not from the same household. So even though the in-person provision on meetings would not be effective, the practical effect of the Safe Start Phase 2 limitation is that we will still be needing to conduct our public meetings remotely because of the five-person limitation. Once we move into Phase 3, the limitation on gatherings goes up to 50 people. And so I think once we get into Phase 3, we'll be back to a place where we'll be able to hold our regular in-person meetings. Any questions on any of that?
Okay, any other questions for the city attorney this evening? Okay, thank you very much, Ronson. Appreciate the update. City member, city member comments. Councilmember Boff. Muted, Doug. Doug, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
C-Trans had its June meeting last night. And it was held remotely, as we, as you might assume. Three main items came up on the meeting last night. First is an update on the Mill Plain Rapid Transit Program, the BRT. Good news is that the Federal Transit Administration has allocated $24.9 million for the project. This represents 50% matching funds. What C-Trans needs to do next is to complete the final application. That's a formal process. As it was described last night, it's pretty much a check off the correct box type of a function. And then C-Trans will be moving along. So that's really good news. The board of directors last night approved a temporary license agreement with the city of Vancouver. This agreement will provide temporary parking space to the Evergreen Park and Ride Lot. And this will be for unhoused citizens who are living out of their vehicles. The program currently is being conducted at the Vancouver Mall. And with the mall beginning to open up here very shortly, it was decided to move that parking arrangement. And the C-Trans Park and Ride Lot out on Northeast 18th Street was determined to be a good location for that. Most of the meeting was held in an executive session. This is an executive session dealt with the subject of CEO Sean Donahue's annual performance evaluation. Out of that came good news that the board likes Sean. They want him to stay with C-Trans. The good news is that Sean likes C-Trans and wants to stay with that organization. So that looks really good. It was decided, though, that his compensation package would be discussed at the July meeting. Sean did indicate some willingness to be flexible because of the financial situation that is hitting C-Trans and other transit agencies. He indicated he'd be very flexible in the discussions with the board. And that's all I've got tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for councilmember Boff? Councilmember Stimmel.
You're muted, Mr. Stimmel.
You're muted, John. John, you're muted.
John, check your application too. It's showing the microphone muted on there, so not just your phone.
Just.
Seven, seven still? Let me switch gears. I'll use this.
You're muted.
Oh, you hear ya. So I called in. Now I'm getting an echo. This isn't gonna work. I don't have any comments tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember.
Thanks, mayor. I did have a citizen ask me about the status of the playgrounds. They were in Richfield a couple of days ago and noticed that the playgrounds were open over there. I wanted to know why ours aren't. You know, are we under the same conditions as them? Are they not following the rules? I don't know if we have any comment on that too. I can pass back to that citizen.
Okay, Matt Jenkins has a report this evening. Maybe he can address that with his report.
Okay, sounds good. And doesn't look like I'm high enough up on the totem pole to get my haircut till next week. Councilmember Stimmel looks a lot better. Probably clogged up a razor cleaning it up. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Strobin.
Nothing. Kind of reiterate what Randy said. I had a few people ask the same thing about the playgrounds as well. And then I would love to back you up on what you said for the high schoolers. This is a rough year for those guys that are graduating and they need the support. I mean, they worked their rears off all their life to get to this point. And hopefully, everybody can join in and help celebrate that graduation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. I will be handing out this year's scholarships once again through the La Center Community Scholarship Foundation on Friday. So that will be a great interaction with the graduates and their families, recognizing them for the various awards that they're getting through the school system as well as the scholarships and their hard work. So between that and Saturday's graduation parade, as everyone's mentioned, let's rally around them and give them all the support that we can.
Very good. Thank you. And next on the agenda, we have staff reports. There's two staff reports this evening. And the first one is the police staff report, and Chief Danny will be presenting.
Good evening, mayor, council. Chief Danny, La Center Police Department. Tonight's report covers the month of May, calls for service. We had, just to let everyone know, fraud and identification thefts are on the rise. Excuse me. So make sure to take appropriate steps to protect your personal information, verify your accounts and that your personal information is secure. Only deal with legitimate businesses online that you know or have checked and utilize secure payment methods. Having a lot of unemployment cases right now where people are filing for unemployment benefits that aren't unemployed. So be careful, be aware, and just kind of check if you can on your personal data to make sure it's secure. Department-wide patrol statistics for this month, or for the last month was calls for service. We had 192 calls totaling, 65 of which were officer-generated, which are proactive calls. Criminal arrests, we had seven arrests totaling, one DUI arrest and six driving while licensed and suspended arrests. Officers took 35 reports that were written, 31 original reports and four supplemental reports on case investigations. Police contacts, we had 100 FI entries completed for activity that occurred in the city of La Center. That includes citations and infractions as well. Traffic stops, we had 81 traffic stops totaling for the month. Overall productivity has been reduced because of the COVID-19 protocols to ensure the health and safety of the community and the members of the LCPD. But as you can see, the stats are pretty high nonetheless. Complaints received from citizens, we had parking complaints where at East 2411 Circle, a vehicle was removed. Northwest Pacific Highway, we had a vehicle removed. And East Heritage, we had not a violation, but we checked on a vehicle there. Contacts were made with registered owners and vehicles with violations of the RCW and LCM. A complaint was received regarding a resident on East 7th Street using evacuation equipment, excavation equipment on his property that potentially was disabling an embankment, destabilizing the embankment, I'm sorry. A second complaint was received regarding the same individual running equipment after hours of darkness. The matter was returned over to La Center Building and Planning. The resident was issued a stop work order and the site could be, until the site could be evaluated. And I think Matt Jenkins will probably go into that as well. Various complaints were received regarding social distancing protocols and the use of face masks. No violations were identified as the COVID-19 protocols have only been a subject of education versus enforcement. So we are educating people on that, but we're not writing citations at the moment. Or there hasn't been a need for that. Traffic emphasis, we focus on the following locations because of citizen complaints. On Aspen Avenue from the 500 block to 1,000 block. Speed emphasis, Northwest Pacific Highway from Northwest 9th Avenue to Northwest Bowlin Street. Northeast Lockwood Creek from East 18th Avenue to East 24th Avenue. Traffic mitigation for each of these areas consists of patrol emphasis being conducted by each officer at different times throughout their shifts. Education was made a priority over enforcement action when prudent due to COVID-19. Each of the areas have had the frequency of speed violations reduced. However, this will be an ongoing process. Community-oriented policing, due to the COVID-19 protocols, all community events and law enforcement participation in those events were canceled. High-risk calls for service. On May 31st, at 22:15 hours, the Clark County Sheriff's Office and La Center Police Officers and Richfield Police Officers responded to a disturbance with a weapon at the G Creek Rest Area, southbound on I-5. It was reported that a white male with an assault rifle was in the rest area pointing their rifle and threatening to kill people. At one point, he had pointed the rifle at individuals' head in close range and told him he would be killed. Elsewhere, La Center Police Officers and Richfield Police Officers were first on scene and began closing down the access to the rest area. Clark County Sheriff's Office arrived and assumed command. A total of approximately 12 officers and deputies were deployed to secure the rest area and locate and detain the suspect. The responding agencies were CCSO with three sergeants and five deputies that took planning, tactic response, primary investigation on the scene since it was in their jurisdiction. LCPD, one sergeant and one officer, tactic response and suspect detention. And Richfield Police Department with two officers, tactic response and less lethal weapons. Total time invested on that call was three hours, including incident debriefing. On declaring the disposition of that call, the suspect was taken into custody without incident and booked into Clark County Jail on felony assault one charges. So that's all the information on that. On a positive note, we have our upcoming events. On June 13th, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, we'll be doing the 2020 Class Graduation Parade, starting at the La Center High School. And I've outlined the route. Starting at the high school, we're gonna turn south or left onto Northeast Highland Avenue. From Northeast Highland Avenue, we're gonna cross 4th Street onto East Ivy Ave. East Ivy Ave, we're gonna turn west or right into the La Center Middle School Parking Lot. From the La Center Middle School Parking Lot, we're gonna turn west, left on East 4th Street. On East 4th Street, we're gonna turn north or right onto East Stone Creek Drive. From East Stone Creek Drive, we're gonna turn west or left on East 7th Street. East 7th Street, turn north or right onto East Fur Avenue. East Fur Avenue, we're gonna turn west or left onto East Heritage Loop. East Heritage Loop, we're gonna turn south or left onto East Southview Heights. East Southview Heights, turn south or left, excuse me. Siri's asking me, what's up? We're gonna turn left onto, where do I evolve? Heritage Loop, turn south or left on East Southview Heights. East Southview Heights, we're gonna turn south or left on Aspen Avenue. Aspen Avenue, turn east or left on 4th Street. On East 4th Street, we're gonna turn north or left onto Northeast Highland Avenue. And then Northeast Highland Avenue, we're gonna turn into the La Center High School Parking Lot. That's so we can give enough exposure around town and opportunity for people with parking areas to be out and spread out so we have the social distancing available. And people can show their support and put signage up or what have you throughout the community. I think it's a, it's gonna be estimated about 100 cars participating in the parade. Three of our patrol vehicles will be involved in the parade. I'm gonna be leading the procession with the two other officers helping with traffic control at the intersections. And then we're gonna have fire as well supporting the event. So it should be a good turnout and plenty of opportunity to applaud the seniors for all their accomplishments in a manner that's safe for everyone, so. Also, the, no, the La Center Lions, as the mayor was saying, and they're gonna have a banner and so forth put out for the seniors as well. And I'm sure most of the PTA or parents will be out there with their signs as well. Any questions about the senior parade? Okay. The next on the list, I just put in a hot map of, although that's the map of the route that we'll be taking, so everyone has it. And the direction of travel is not indicated. That's why I read off what I read off, and that's on the previous page. The next map on the page is going to indicate our calls for service for the month of May. And it shows basically a cluster of areas that we've been working. And also in the city of Richfield, because that's where our calls, a lot of our calls assisting them come up. So that's why the city of Richfield's also got some area there where our dots are on. And as usual, the next page after that is our event type and counts, which I covered predominantly in the previous information. But this just gives you an overall of what we're actually working on by call and category. And then the page following are also the breakdown of what those calls are and the event counts that we have. And that, with that, that's all I have. If there's any questions or concerns, be happy to try to answer them. No questions, chief. It's a great report. Thank you. You're welcome.
Chief, I would just like to extend our appreciation to you and the officers for involvement with this year's graduation. But I would also like to, you know, just stress being careful out there with the tensions and emotions being high the longer this quarantine continues and all of the unrest in our society right now. So please be careful and take care.
Appreciate that, and I'll definitely pass it on. And we've been getting a lot of community support, which is phenomenal, as always, with the citizens of La Center. And it's very much appreciated. And even those that we deal with come back after the fact and appreciate, you know, that they were involved in an emotional state at the time, but they appreciated how we handled the incident with them. So it's been nice to hear that was kind of comments coming back.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the chief this evening? Okay, thank you, chief. Appreciate it. The next staff report we have this evening is the Public Works Staff Report. And Public Manager Matt Jenkins will be here.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council, citizens. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, good evening, Matt.
Trying to improve the bandwidth this week. So first and foremost, I'd like to start with Public Works operations. In streets and facilities, Public Works, you know, they've consistently just continued to maintain properties, drainage systems throughout the city and keep the properties clear. They've also continuously monitored the roads, looking for potholes throughout the city along with other hazards. The community center, the play structures and the restrooms throughout town remain closed at this time. We are assessing that. I know Richfield is open. I know there are some questions about that. But given that we're in Phase 2, Phase 2 requires five or less people to be within social distancing standards. On a playground, that's a high vector attraction area. A lot of kids touching a lot of things with unwashed hands. A lot more than five. And if you look at the size of the play structure, at any given time during peak hours, kids can be in, much more kids than five can be in closer proximity than what the state had in mind for Phase 2. So right now, that's, but I'm in contact with other cities and looking at what their justifications are. So we may change that going up, going forward. A citizen has been removing and damaging caution tape and signage around Holly Park Play Structures. And that's been turned to the PD. It was caught on camera. I believe the person's been talked to at this point. That being said, we understand people are frustrated. These are frustrating. Uh, that being said, we understand people are frustrated. This, these are frustrating times. Uh, they're difficult. I'm a father of three. I think all of us fathers and mothers, especially school out, we get it. Um, but at the same time, you know, we're doing this for the safety of kids in the community and, and the grandparents. So please bear with us as we try to navigate these waters. Um, the main, the staff has been providing janitorial for city hall and community development still. Um, we're not letting in outside janitorial. That may change in phase three. Um, on the parks and grounds side, more warm weather schedule, uh, starting to pick up as you can imagine with the rain and then, and then, um, everything else. So we live in a a very, uh, rush environment, so things grow rapidly and, uh, the, the staff are busier when it just comes to maintaining lawns and trails. So staff currently preparing trails and paths in preparation for ice and the nice weather. Um, we're already starting to see how to use both, uh, on the, in the informal side underneath the, um, bridge on the Center Road and Pollock Park, and then, um, also on the city side with the kayak launch under the bridge. So, we just asked the people, continue to practice social distancing, try to, you know, um, go by the state's guidelines with that, but, uh, we're, we're glad people are enjoying that. Um, I know the staff works very hard, uh, to keep that nice for the citizens. Um, the staff is working to correct damage on the Breezy Creek Trail. Uh, the chief had mentioned that earlier. There, there was a citizen doing some personal construction on their home. They were letting a lot, but it turned into a bigger job than they originally notified the city of. So now we're at the point where permits are involved. A stop work order's been issued. We've, we've sent in a compliance letter to the citizen to put down silt fencing um, and keep runoff from going across the trail. The city is uh, hoping to work with the citizen to get this corrected, but they, they've really, uh, uh, taken off on the project without notifying the city of what they, what their true intent was. So, um, now we're in the process of redirecting and, uh, hoping to come to terms and both take care of the trail and any damage done there and to the critical areas and helping the citizen, uh, complete their project. Um, we also ask the citizens, understand that due to COVID- nineteen restrictions, the city's not been able to use work crews in high labor areas, wetlands and wetland buffers. Uh, staff working very hard to bridge the gap in service and meet the expectations of the public, but we've had some complaints coming in, and we understand these complaints, uh, normally, you know, with a crew, you have eight to, eight to twelve people weed eating in and defined area. Without them, we have four. So we're, we're working very hard to bridge these gaps. And once, once we get to phase three, phase four, and we can start to have work crews in on a regular basis, which we've used for years, we'll be able to get that back up and, uh, and stay on top of this. Thank you for your understanding there. Um, can everybody still hear me okay? Just sound check, because last we were broken up. Okay, great. Um, under equipment, staff's completed all annual services and fluid and filter changes. Now we're working on, now we're moving on to, um, some modifications, um, and then, uh, postponed, uh, repair and replacement items. So, uh, most of the equipment that we use in the warmer months is ready and up and going. Uh, I'd like to thank staff for their hard efforts on that. Um, and then on the personnel side, currently all staff are working, um, and at the time, we were working modified shifts, but this, I printed this prior to phase two, so now employees are moving back to normal shift schedules. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Um, under projects, there are no current projects. Um, and then that moves us to wastewater operations. Um, on the operating side, again, our plant parameters on the, concerning the NPDES permit are well within limits. Uh, we're we're between ninety-eight point five and ninety-nine point nine percent, which is pretty incredible. Uh, staff is optimizing for warm weather operations as the plant goes from winter to summer. It like any, like any living creatures, the temperature changes, it changes. So, um, they're monitoring that, adjusting and optimizing. Um, biosol's processing is still at the normal level, um, though we are working with ALN A during their startup. Uh, they send us biosol's and they may have to slow down going forward for a few weeks, but other than that, we don't see any interruptions. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing, boys. Um, if any of you by the plant, you noticed that the six-ton gantry crane is at the end of the runway instead of close to the, the building. Uh, it's currently undergoing, um, a full maintenance review along with, uh, checkout and then a replacement of the travel motor. So that's what's going on there. If anybody sees that sticking out out there like a sore thumb. Um, on the admin side, uh, made DMR is in progress. Actually, it's done. We just need to submit it. Um, staff's currently working regular shifts, maintaining social distancing and in confined areas using face masks, uh, according to LNI principles and practices along with all other departments. Um, office lab sanitation frequencies remain to increase due to COVID- nineteen, but frankly, that sanitizes and cleans that lab so much that it's almost overkill. Um, the annual list of industrial users, uh, which is basically what the concentration flow and contents of any wastewater coming from any business in the center is under final review. We'll spend that DOE going forward um, in the next few days. Uh, the annual laboratory accreditation has been completed and submitted to the Department of Ecology as well. Uh, so we, we have to do that to conduct all of our state informal testing, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant and keep our accreditation there. That's been completed. Um, projects, uh, we're still waiting hold for, uh, different phases of COVID, so we can get, uh, even on that. Um, on the building department, um, permanent construction are moving forward in accordance with Governor Inslee's current order, um, in the phase we're in. Uh, staff will be accepting plans and applications to review COVID- nineteen social distancing and modification intake procedures. Uh, currently, the lobby's not open. Uh, we're still continuing to practice social distancing. Uh, when they're, when they're taken in, they're put on hold for seventy-two hours. Staff begins to handle the plants and review them. Um, inspections will be performed if the builder is meeting the criteria set by the official, which is social distancing, clearing the room, uh, masks are, are required. And, uh, we have, uh, very good cooperation from the building community on that, so I'd like to thank them. And, uh, staff are back in the office full-time as of, uh, this week, um, since we're in phase two and back to normal hours. So uh, no more working from home, but we are fully staffed. So we are practicing social distancing and PP and E measures within those offices. Are there any questions?
Matt, this is Randy. I know, I apologize for the dogs barking in the background. My girlfriend just showed up. Um, what's the status of the stormwater receptors that have been damaged?
Yeah, so we are going through those now that we're in warmer temperatures. Uh, we are going to set those. Um, they need to be slightly modified and shaved because the, the, the style that was installed previously is an off-size. It's no longer from fit manufactured. So staff is working on those. Um, we know they've been out there unfortunately through a period of time and the weather got cold and they've had to sit there for six months, and I apologize for the eyeswore on that, but they are at the top of our priorit list.
Great, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions, uh, or comments for Public Works Manager?
Thank you, Matt.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, so, uh, next on the agenda, we have, under new business, there is one resolution on the agenda this evening, which is twenty-dash-four-five-one. It's a resolution requesting the governor to move Clark County into phase three of the Safe Start Washington Plan. Um, Bronson, if you could just please introduce this resolution, and then, um, I'll visit council a little bit about it.
All right. Um, so Resolution twenty-four-five-one is a resolution from the council requesting that the governor move Clark County, including La Center, into phase three of the Safe Start Plan as expeditiously as possible. And, um, I prepared this resolution, uh, pursuant to our request from the mayor, uh, that he made yesterday, that I do so. Uh, this resolution is patterned after a resolution that was passed by the Washto City Council. And I'd just like to address a procedural matter, um, because this resolution is coming before you on fairly short notice. Uh, but, uh, doing so and considering it is, uh, perfectly legal. Um, there's a provision of the Open Public Meeting Act that says that, uh, our agendas should be published, uh, identifying matters that are going to be considered at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. However, that, uh, section of the Open Public Meetings Act says that you do not do so, the failure to do so does not affect the, um, validity of the action that you take. And with a passage or consideration of a resolution like this, uh, there is no public notice really, other than the twenty-four hours that's required. It, it isn't a matter that's subject to a public hearing or a public comment. Uh, so that's the reason why, uh, it can be considered a short notice. Um, so I think it's, uh, perfectly fine for the council to consider the resolution, and I'll leave it to the mayor to provide you the background on it.
Very good. Thank you, Bronson. So as this attorney indicated, this is a resolution that was adopted by the Washto City Council on June eighth. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, I had a conversation with, uh, city manager David Scott, and we talked about, uh, you know, the reasoning for doing it, uh, some of the background. Um, what impressed me when I read this resolution is the time that it takes in a request to the governor to consider, um, the timeline for going to phase three. Um, as I mentioned to the council earlier in the meeting, I did have a call from, uh, one of the cardroom owners yesterday indicating that, um, right now they're planning to open up on, uh, July first. And it was, I mean, for looking at this resolution, and that phone call, uh, led me to the conclusion I should um, present to this, this to the council this evening and ask the council to approve this resolution and move it and send it to the governor. Um, because I think it could potentially help with the reopening of our cardrooms. Uh, the language that I did ask the city attorney to insert into this resolution, that of course wasn't in the Washto's resolution, was the language acknowledging the ALN A, uh, tribal casino opened on May twenty-eighth, and it's right here at the La Center Junction, and our cardrooms remain to be, remain closed. So with that, um, you know, if the council has any discussion or questions that they would like to ask regarding this resolution, I do apologize for getting it into the packet. However, I just recently learned about it last evening about, uh, seven o'clock, so, uh, it'll happen fast. Any question?
I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay.
I think it's needed. Mayor, I've moved to approve Resolution twenty-dash-four-fifty-one, a resolution requesting the governor to move Clark County into phase three of the Safe Start Washington Plan.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-dash forty-one, resolution requesting the governor to move Clark County into phase three of the Safe Start Washington Plan. Um, because of the platform that we're using this evening, I know this is a resolution, but I would still like the clerk to ask for, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Sir, uh, Councilmember Both.
Yes.
Councilmember Stimel.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sivenny.
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Um, thank you very, council. Um, I really appreciate it. Again, I apologize for the short notice and as it says, resolution, the clerk will be directed to forward this resolution to the governor and all appropriate state executive officials, uh, and Clark County and other cities. So again, I appreciate it, and, um, again, I think it sends a really good message and the tone is great. It's very respectful, and I don't think it caused any, any heartburn at all. Um, and I also would like to thank the, um, the Washto City Council for sharing that with us, and, um, I'll be sure to let the city manager know that this passed unanimously this evening. With that, that concludes our city council agenda, agenda for this evening. Um, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All favor say aye.
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 opposed. Motion, Jerry. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night.
Yes. Hi.